The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Good evening. Welcome to the Joint Board for Tuesday, May 10th, Police Stanford Pledge Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the board members please introduce themselves, starting at my far right.
Mike LaMoth.
Orlando Kelfi, Board of Finance.
Mike Ferri, Board of Finance.
Jody Zills-Gagny, City Council.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Anthony Demato, City Council.
Cheryl Tebow, Board of Finance.
Dave Mills, City Council.
Dave Proleski, City Council, District 2.
Calvin Brown, City Council, District 1.
Mary Fortier, City Council, District 3.
Town Clerk Teresa Pack.
Assistant Don LaBella.
I'm Mayor Ken Kacain, item number one.
Approval of minutes of the regular joint board meeting on April 12th, 2016, and the joint board workshop on March 7th, 2016.
Of approval?
Second.
Motion made, second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, item number two.
It's the consent calendar, and there are eight items. 2A is to make an additional appropriation of $225 within the special grants and donations fund funded by donations for the CERT team. 2B is to make an additional appropriation of $324,536 within the special grants and donations fund for code enforcement. 2C is to transfer $5,200 within the park's operating budget for water sewer expenses. 2D is to make an additional appropriation of $161,909 within the Capital Projects School Fund for the installation of new preschool playgrounds funded by grant revenue. 2E is to make an additional appropriation of $100,000 within special grants and donations fund for Bristol Central High School funded by grant revenue. 2F is to make an additional appropriation of $5,000 within the special grants and donations fund to create a push program funded by grant revenue. 2G is to make an additional appropriation of $178,861 within the special education grant fund for technology funded by grant revenue. And 2H is to make an additional appropriation of $20,000 within the special education grant fund funded by grant revenue.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, item number three.
To transfer $140,000 within the Public Works operating budget for the purchase of an asphalt recycler.
Of approval?
Motion made, second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, item number four.
To transfer $10,000 from the general fund contingency account to operating transfers out special revenue.
So move.
Second.
Motion made, second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, item five.
To make an additional appropriation of $40,000 within the special grants and donations fund for the 2016 distracted driving high visibility enforcement grant.
So move.
Second. Motion made, second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, item number six.
To transfer $125,010 from the general fund contingency account to the demolition account for 1,008 Stafford Avenue and 132 George Street.
Of approval?
Second.
Motion made, second discussion.
Your honor, under discussion, 132 George Street, is that where the fire occurred several weeks ago?
Yes.
Okay.
And so wasn't the Stafford Avenue, that's why we didn't take it out of code enforcement.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Let me also go back to that, we're going to get back that money through the insurance.
Right.
They were taking down emergency.
Right.
Item number seven.
Is the monthly revenue and expense report presentation by the controller.
Good evening, Mayor, Joint Board members. Two items, obviously, in the current budget, we're doing fine, revenues are coming in as expected, expenditures are under control, mostly in part because of the type of winter that we have had, so there's no major concerns, and tax collections are doing fine. But there is a concern with regards to, if you've seen the paper this morning, the headlines with regards to the state budget and how it affects municipalities, and it has affected Bristol just like it has every other municipality. The Board of Finance on April 26th approved a budget mil rate of 1.42 mil increase, and since that time, the budget numbers have been released, matter of fact, the budget was released this afternoon, I understand, and we have a little bit more damage to that budget, and about $1,276,000, all on the revenue side, and all on the city side, not affecting the education. So there has to be a modification to the adopted budget of the Board of Finance. We have some suggestions, just to point out, just to talk about this a little bit. It's $1,276,000 additional hit since the 26th. We're, excuse me, we're proposing to split that effect, and half of it would hit the budget. We have several items that we'll give to you and hand out and show you, basically hitting the, going back to the public works, snow and roads and fleet, and there was a $275,000, you recalled, Madam Chairwoman, probably have to go back to reduce those numbers, in addition to economic development, some OPEB monies that we wanted to catch up on, we'll probably reverse that action, and also probably recommend to you a reversal of the $100,000 that was earmarked for capital for the Board of Education. If we, and then, that's half of the amount, and then the other half would be mil rate, so we would be going from 1.42 mils to 1.60 mils, and then, so the option, the option is either reduce further on the city side, which I would not recommend because it would be going pretty deep into city services, this will, if we do a 50-50, the city services will be sustained, it won't be, you know, really difficult to do so, but obviously, if we didn't do that, then the mil rate would go from 1.6 mil increase to a 1.8, and that's getting, that's getting a little, a little deep. So we've heard this afternoon that it's, that's the number, however, as you've heard in the past and seen in the past, that's the budget, but there can be implementer bills at the last second, and that could change things. So this is what we're seeing at this point in time, and we'll know probably a little bit further by Thursday whether we recommend to the mayor to extend the emergency services and delay the adoption of the budget on Monday. I'm guessing at this point that's highly probable, because we just don't know the numbers, and I'm seeing in other communities that, other communities like us are taking the worst-case scenario. They're budgeting for the loss of revenues, not expecting the budget adoption to, which will probably be next Wednesday or Thursday, to put back any of those revenues, so at this point in time, it's very difficult. I met with the mayor, yesterday, Mayor, with Bets, and it's not good news, obviously, for this year, but what's equally important and we need to keep in our thoughts is, he's telling us next year is going to be worse, because the revenues are not just coming in from the income tax to those, you've probably read in the paper, for the wealthier residents down in Fairfield County, the top 50, and it's about a $250 million loss, and that's going to be compounded into the next couple of years, so next year is probably going to be a more difficult year than this year. Fortunately, the good thing is that our finances are in order. I mean, we are not in a position that, at this point, that we have to dig into our fund balances, as a matter of fact, we've eliminated the use of our fund balance, and that's the first time in probably, I've been here 18 years, and it's probably been longer than that, and that'll be a very big plus for us when we entertain the rating agencies coming up here in the spring, probably April or May-ish around that time. I suspect that we will end this fiscal year with a surplus, that's another big positive. The city of Middletown, last month, received a AAA rating, so we're, even though we don't have the waterfront that they do, nevertheless, we have some of the complexity that they do, as far as the housing stock in the downtown and things like that, so I would anticipate that we'll be in the running for something if we can keep everything positive and next year keep the services safe while trying to have only a moderate increase in taxes once again, but it's a difficult shell game.
Let me add that I spent half the day today at CCM, at their meeting, and the 1.2, we're anticipating to go up.
You are?
Our loss, yes, that's what we're starting at, and we're anticipating, through the implementer bill, a lot of things change, so it's not looking good for
No, that isn't.
For the state budget and trickling down to all the communities, not just Bristol.
I suspect then, under that case, that we're going to probably have to have some type of workshop with the board, because what I just proposed, the split, is at the 1.2 level, but, you know, I don't have the power of the vote, I just suggest to you, but if it goes deeper than that, we got to have a conversation.
Through the chair.
Oh, pardon me, after you, Cheryl.
Thank you. At this point, where everything's still, the dust hasn't settled, I would think it would be wise that we postpone the budget adoption for next week and do have that workshop. We would appreciate you sending out the, what you have, so that we can absorb that and come up with a new budget recommendation for joint board. There's, you know, I don't want to do it on the back of an envelope, and I don't want to do it just by looking through emails, so we need to have another workshop.
Yeah, I think we do, I think that's right, so I know that the city clerk has to have the notice, and if everyone agrees, then I think possibly, I think we should postpone that adoption Monday night, we'll talk about it, Mayor, and we'll set a workshop up, and I'll speak with you during, between now and the end of the week, what's best for all the members. We'll poll the Board of Finance members to see who's available, what time.
Through the chair, a couple of questions for you, Glenn.
Sure.
Can you, first one, is an easy one, can you give me that potential mil rate again? Did you say 1.6?
Yes, 1.6 from the adopted rate of 1.42.
Right, right, got it.
The split, the split of taking 655,000 of expenditure cuts left a mil rate increase of .18.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then if, obviously, if we're going to go a little bit deeper, the Board of Finance has got to figure out
More to discuss, right.
Which way they want to go in this split.
Now, following up on that, Glenn, would it be possible to include the city council in this workshop that you're discussing, since we're all going to have to vote on the final budget adoption?
Not only possible, it'll be required, I'll make sure you receive everything that we distribute.
Great, so it can be a joint board workshop?
I don't know about that. It's the Board of Finance's responsibility to adopt the budget and revise, so I don't, I'll have to.
Chairman Tebow, could it be a joint board workshop?
You're welcome to attend, we'll take, you know, we'll give you time to address the Board of Finance, but the vote comes down to what the Board of Finance wants to do as far as the budget goes.
Okay.
But we'd prefer it to be that way, just so that if you have specific questions that you want to ask, if you would forward them through me, but we'll give you time to, you know, comment.
So you'll give us time to comment at the workshop?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, Glenn.
Well, I was going to say that all my comments have been referenced to the city side of the budget, obviously not to the Board of Education side, so if there was any change to that, obviously, that would, that would be a direct increase to the mil rate and nothing else.
Right.
If it's an increase.
Okay.
Yeah. Let me see, I have another question you were going to ask.
I was going to actually ask about the Board of Ed funding and where we stand right now, so everything that we just talked about aside, right now, we're, from the Board of Ed's original request
Yes.
For a 4.47 increase,
Yes.
We're giving them a 3.2% increase, is that right?
Oh, I don't
Or close?
I don't know the percentages, I'm not
We only know the dollars.
All right. That's fine, that's fine, talk to me in dollars. Their original request was a 4.7
4.7 million.
Million, and we're so far
And we gave them, well, I shouldn't say we
Right.
I recommended 1,540,000.
I got that.
And then, as the final, on the 26th, there was an increase of 310,000, is that correct, Cheryl, if I recall?
Well, to MBR, but there is another increase by moving other funds over
Right, so total
It was like 800,000, was it?
It was more than that, Robin has the number, so.
I don't have the number.
I can pull up my email real quick, I want to give you the right number.
Focus so much on the city side, kind of forgot about the Board of Ed's side.
Right.
So there was the, the number
I got it.
That the Board of Ed adopted, or that the Board of Finance adopted was $310,000 increase to MBR
No, yep.
And 2.8, rough million, in revenues that we were going to transfer from the city side of the budget to the Board of Ed.
So 3.1 million.
So they get 3.1 million.
So the request was 4.7 million, and we're at 3.1 million.
And one point I want to just clarify is, they were at 4.7 million, but then they had $578,000 of healthcare savings to bring
Right.
New request down to about 4.2.
4.2, great, great.
So they're being shorted about a million.
About a million.
Mm-hmm.
Great, so my question is, if we were able to, you know, get everybody here to agree that, you know, on second thought, the Board of Ed should have that extra million, speaking in very rough terms, if that's acceptable, what kind of impact would that have on MBR? Actually, not MBR, I misspoke, on mil rate?
It's approximately 3 tenths of a mil, so you'd go from 1.6 to 1.9
Okay.
And then whatever increase that CCM tells us that is in the bill that the mayor just mentioned, so you'll be at 1.9 mils.
Okay, well
And possibly more.
Right, speaking just for myself, this is something that I wanted to bring up tonight at Joint Board, you know, having been to the Board of Ed budget workshops, and having been to the Board of Finance meetings and special meetings, and thinking about this, you know, from a counselor's standpoint, I'm still left to feel like we really, this is just my opinion, I would welcome other people's comments, but my opinion is, I feel like we're still sort of morally obligated, for the schools at this point, to get them up to that 4.1-ish million, 4.2 million that they originally asked us for, and it's unfortunate that we're hearing this tough news about how the state budget could impact us tonight, and that's certainly something to consider, but I would ask the Board of Finance and the city council to reconsider fully funding the Board of Ed at the level they originally asked us, and maybe we can talk about that some more before the final budget adoption, but that's where my head is, at least.
At the workshop, I mean, you can speak your point, but the workshop's going to be how to close the gap between the state budget and what we have. I think the Board of Finance voted 8 to 1 to accept the budget we have, and I would also point out that some of the funds that they were now having control could, in a, based on actuals of last year compared to what was budgeted, easily cut into some of that shortfall, and I also feel that if you're going to recommend we fully fund, why stop there? Why not the police department, why not the fire department? They've all come in, and everybody's had to find ways to manage the mil rate.
Sure.
So you can, I'm just going to share that a vote to 8 to 1 was pretty confident, and the board may change their opinion, and they're welcome to, and that vote will happen on that night.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to support Councilman Brown's proposal, and I guess, maybe that's not the best word, but his suggestion, because I do want to say that I think our education budget is important for the value of our community, and I think when we're talking about mil rate increases, there's nothing worth a mil rate increase more than education. I think it is the single most important thing we do that gives our community value. People decide what community to buy homes in, based primarily on education, and I think our numbers are, have been, historically, way too low, and people see that, and it affects our community, and we have to start attracting younger families to Bristol, and we also have to be very mindful of the student-teacher ratio, and class sizes are in, getting very high in multiple schools across the district, and I just believe that every child deserves the opportunity to excel as best they can, and whether you're a special ed kid or an accelerated student, a college-bound student or not, small class size is the best way for learning to happen, and the best way for you to achieve the best success possible. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say something, in terms of the Board of Finance's, the burden we have to bear, because, you know, I have a nine-year-old daughter, so I understand the whole education value, but I also understand the economics of making sure that our streets are safe, that various areas of the community are safe, that we have a well-funded, strong fire department, our public works is strong, our park department is strong, and somehow or another, we have to balance all of those different, all those different interests throughout our community, because it isn't just young folks, and by the way, when we do have young folks looking to come into town, we don't want to be burning them with such an incredibly high mil rate that that alone keeps them from being able to afford the housing to live within the town. So there's multiple reasons why people would want to move to this town, but there's also multiple reasons that we need to keep in mind when it's time to fund all of these things, and if we're not giving equal weight right across the board, then, you know, then there's areas of our community that are unfortunately fall off the cliff, and that's not fair, nor is it good for the community in general.
Thank you. Any other discussion, questions? Thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Any other business? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, council meeting will start in five minutes.
Good evening. Welcome to the city council meeting, May 10th, 2016, Police Stanford Pledge Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the councilors to please introduce themselves, starting at my far right.
Calvin Brown, District 1.
Anthony Demato, District 1.
Jody Zills-Gagny, District 2.
Dave Mills, District 3.
Dave Proleski, District 2.
Mary Fortier, District 3.
Town Clerk Teresa Pack.
Assistant Don LaBella.
I'm Mayor Ken Kacain. Ask for a moment of silence for Michael Bannon Jr., he was a park commissioner and a long-term Board of Ed commissioner, he passed away, as well as there are troops on Thank you. Creed Law Firm, are you here? Creed Law Firm? I'll let you go first.
I'm a senior. I'm a Creed End Firm.
Mayor, and the town council, I wanted to take this opportunity, because in addition to being a lawyer in town, I'm actually, like to say, I'm a retired army officer who's working as a lawyer now, pretending to be a lawyer, I guess, after my 24 years of active duty, and one of the joys of my life, passions, is the Fisher House Foundation. It's a Fisher House Foundation works just like a Ronald McDonald House, there's 70 of them around the country, including one at Dover, that are utilized by the families of the deceased veterans when they come home from overseas. It provides the same services as a Ronald McDonald House, and it's for free, and millions of families, of Connecticut families, in fact, families here in Bristol have stayed at Fisher Houses elsewhere in the country, and we have not had one here in Connecticut until now. We're building, we're breaking ground this summer, and at the VA in West Haven, it's a 16,000 square foot facility, a $6 million building, and it's a love of passion, if my office staff was here right now, I'm sure they would agree. We're rapidly approaching the point where every time I see a friend on the street, they run the other way, because they know I'm going to ask them to do something, but I wanted to take an opportunity, though, to present, actually, there were two plaques that were important to this city, the first one is to the Bristol Police Department, who have come out every year at one of our key events, we have the Bristol Half Marathon, which this year is March, I'm sorry, March, is August 16th. It's an event that attracts, almost 40% of the runners come from outside Connecticut. In fact, an endearing, to me, an endearing story was last year, the runner that came the farthest was a young Muslim woman who works for the government in the accounting office, and she worked down in Philadelphia, and she drove up for this race, and she was the last one in, and she was wearing a burka, and it was hot, so she was very, very kind, and she was like, this is my country too, and if this helps the injured veterans, I'm going to be part of it. You can't make that up, you know, that's what makes America great. So I wanted to, at this point, though, I wanted to call Officer, Captain Cavello forward, we were just talking in the back there, and I'm sorry about that speeding ticket, I promise I'll take care of it next week, but I wanted to present a little plaque to them, to the Bristol Police Department, in recognition of their outstanding service to the Fisher House of Connecticut, and their dedication to Connecticut families and the military families for their support in the annual half marathon, Bristol Half Marathon, so I wanted to thank you very, very Thank you. Wait a minute, I think I just heard the mayor saying that you were going to run this year and represent the police, good job.
You have a new person in last place.
Just don't ask me to run. You know, we're very happy also, because the Fisher House, this half marathon, a rising tide floats all boats, so it's good for Bristol, it's a good message to the Chamber of Commerce and Businesses, because we generate, people come and stay overnight, they shop in hotels, they go to their stores afterwards. I also wanted to thank Harvest Bakery, I see them here tonight, if I knew you were here, I do have a plaque for you, I would have brought it, but they've been very kind to us also over the last few years, and I appreciate it. Bristol's a good place to live. It's a great place to live, thank you very much. Thank you. Now we'll do the youth recognition awards, Mrs. Casson.
Good evening, Mayor, and city council members, it's my pleasure this evening as Chair of the Bristol Youth Commission to present tonight our 24th Annual Youth Recognition Awards to six exceptional youth this evening. These youth have given exceptional volunteer service and have made either a meaningful contribution to their school, a service agency, and/or our community. Tonight, these individuals will be receiving a very special volunteer service medal, a carabiner, which symbolizes their linking up with our community, they will be receiving a proclamation from the mayor, and a very special You Make a Difference tote bag. So Mayor, if you'd like to come up and read the proclamation that these individuals will be receiving this evening?
The 2016 Bristol Youth Service Recognition, whereas the future of our nation, state, and our community depends upon the energy and enthusiasm and positive contributions made by our youth, and whereas is the duty of all citizens to recognize and encourage youth volunteer service and to provide them with the right examples and opportunities. And whereas these special contributions, which address some of the major challenges within our community, such as preventing violence and substance abuse, mentoring a young child, helping disabled neighbor, or fundraising for charity to help underprivileged or combat illness, are recognized tonight by the mayor and the Bristol Youth Commission Annual Youth Service Recognition Award. Whereas, the individual youth receiving this award tonight have demonstrated outstanding volunteer efforts to unselfishly help others through the use of his or her's own thoughtfulness, time, special talents and skills, and dedication to the betterment of the community. And now, therefore, I Ken Kacain, Mayor of the city of Bristol, take great pleasure in honoring the student's name, there's too many, I'm not going to read every proclamation, and to thank him or her for the dedication and compassionate efforts. I therefore have to sign my name and cause a great seal of Bristol to affix this 10th day of May in the year of our 2016, Mayor Ken Kacain.
So this is the recognition that the children are going to receive.
Yes. So our first youth recipient this evening is an elementary student, Harley Bradley, who goes to Hubble School. Kamana Harley, she is a member of the Unified Sports Team, a community program that is run through Hubble School and is affiliated with the Special Olympics. During practices, Harley arrives early to help set up and stays behind for the cleanup. Every day also, Harley volunteers her time at the end of the school day by serving as a runner for the bus room. She has volunteered over 25 hours of community service to her school and our Bristol community. Congratulations, Harley. Our next recipient is Jordan Butler, who attends Chippens Hill Middle School. Jordan has assisted with many of her church projects, she also assists with the preparation, setup, and cleanup of monthly communion. Jordan is always willing to help when asked, and she has strongly interacted with many individuals involved in every project. She also is a leader for her Vacation Bible School. Jordan has volunteered over 102 hours of community service to schools, community, and organizations in Bristol. Congratulations, Jordan. Our next youth recipient is Zachary Butler, who attends EC Goodwin Tech. Zachary has also assisted Zachary has also assisted with many of his church projects, including cooking and serving meals for the needy in the soup kitchen. He helps with spring and fall grounds cleanup, funeral assistance, and communion preparations. Zachary also volunteers at the Salvation Army. The Salvation Army states, "We would not be able to do all that we do without having a volunteer like Zachary." He is a very hard worker, and he has volunteered over 168 hours of community service to schools and our Bristol community. Our next recipient is Emily Jassino. She is a student at Bristol Central High School. Emily volunteered her time this summer with the Bristol Parks and Rec Department. She volunteered over 215 hours of her own time to work with approximately 120 youth to give them a very positive camp experience. Emily also recently has taken a volunteer position as a page at the Bristol Public Library and is always consistently looking for ways to improve her community. She has volunteered over 230 hours to her schools and the organizations in Bristol. Our next recipient is Gabrielle Raymond, who is also a student at Bristol Central High School. As a member of the Bristol Central Interact Club, Gabrielle has participated in many activities: Make-A-Wish Foundation, the Bristol Mum Festival, and the Rotary Pizza Challenge. For the last two years, Gabrielle has also volunteered in the Children's Department at the Plainville Public Library. She is a founding member of the Rambassador Program at Bristol Central High School, which pairs responsible seniors with incoming freshmen. Gabrielle has volunteered over 95 hours of community service, and we thank you for that. Our final youth volunteer recipient this evening is Gagin Singh, who is also a student at Bristol Central High School. Gagin is also a member of the Bristol Central Interact Club and has participated in many activities such as the Special Olympics, the Bristol Mum Festival, the Estella Wilderness Foundation Day, and the Senior Center Craft Fair. She has also volunteered for the last four years as a substitute teacher and secretary at her religious and language school. She has great organizational skills. Gagin has volunteered over 132 hours of volunteer community service to her schools and organizations in Bristol. I'd also like to thank the other Bristol Youth Commission members who are here this evening. We have Commissioner Jeffrey Beauchamp, Tanya Ledesma. We also have with us Joan Trafford, Joe Grabowski, if you're here, you can stand up. Also, Kimely Carmelik. And I'd also like to thank the Director of Bristol Youth Services, Eileen McNulty, and her Administrative Assistant, Jennifer Carmelik. So we're going to take a quick picture. Thank you very much, and we hope to have many more youth next year.
Next, I'd like to ask Marty and Jackie to come on up front, please. I'm sure they don't need any introduction, but these are the owners of the Harvest Bakery. And before I read this, let me, little fun fact that I just learned. My parents are celebrating their 50th anniversary this weekend, and they're renewing their vows. And what I was told was, they had their original wedding cake made at Harvest Bakery, and you are replicating the wedding cake for the party this weekend. So that's pretty cool. So I have a proclamation from the, from the City of Bristol in recognition of Marty and Harvest Bakery. Whereas Harvest Bakery was opened on Memorial Day in 1941, owners Louis and Ann Barth. And whereas the original address of the bakery was 562 North Main Street, Bristol. Whereas in 1948, the bakery was relocated to 84 Farmington Avenue. Whereas in 1964, Ann and Louis Barth retired, their daughter Barbara and her husband Payson took over the operations. Whereas Marty, Susan, Jerry were children of Barbara and Payson, who were enlisted in the work at the bakery at a very young age. Whereas in the summer of 1974, Marty met his wife Jackie while working together. And whereas in 1975, Marty graduated from UConn, and in 1979, he returned to the bakery and married his wife Jackie. Marty and his wife took over the family business, thus becoming the third generation. And whereas Marty and Jackie made many improvements to the bakery, including remodeling and updating all machinery, they also updated the product line to offer sugar-free, gluten-free products. Whereas Marty continued to use many of his grandfather's scratch formula recipes, whereas the bakery was noted for. Whereas Harvest Bakery presently employs approximately 32 full-time and part-time workers, many of which are second-generation employees in the parents' footsteps. Whereas in 19, in 2016, Harvest Bakery celebrated 75th year anniversary and is known as Bristol's number, number-one bakery. Therefore, I Ken Cacain, Mayor of the City of Bristol, do hereby recommend, do hereby commend and honor Marty for his work, ethics, and dedication to giving the community of Bristol. Therefore, I here on do sign my name and cause the great seal of the City of Bristol to affix the 10th day of May, our year, our Lord 2016.
Again, just hang on for a second, Jackie. Just hang on for a second. Again, all of us have been to Harvest Bakery at some time or another and taken a number from the counter or whatever to wait in line, and their efficient method of serving people has been fantastic. So certainly, they have been an institution that we're going to miss. And in honor of Marty today, I wore my Best Buns in Bristol t-shirt today, so that, you're welcome. But yeah, I always advertise that no one believed that I had the best buns in Bristol, but he does. So we just want to, again, appreciate everything that he's done for the community, and certainly, hopefully, that the people that are going to succeed him will carry on that tradition. So thank you very much.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. I should come to more council meetings. This is very uplifting here. This has been very nice, very nice meeting so far. It's my pleasure to read a proclamation on behalf of His Excellency Daniel P. Malloy, the Governor. And here's what the official statement is. Whereas the public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are vitally important to the health, safety, and well-being of the people of the State of Connecticut. And whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals, engineers, and administrators representing all levels of government who are responsible for and must design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation, water supply, sewage, and refuse disposal systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to serve our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens and civic leaders of this country to gain knowledge of and maintain a progressive interest in the public work needs and program of their respective communities, now therefore, I, Daniel P. Malloy, Governor of the State of Connecticut, do hereby proclaim May 15th to May 21st, 2016, as Public Works Week in the State of Connecticut.
I have one to read from the city. In recognition of Public Works Week 2016, public works, infrastructure, facilities, parks, and open spaces and services are of vital importance to the health, safety, and well-being of the citizens of Bristol. Whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the City of Bristol Public Works, Parks, and Water Department, plus Board of Education, Building, and Grounds Division employees, who are responsible for and must plan, design, build, operate, maintain transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to serve our citizens. Whereas it is a public interest for the citizens and civic leaders and children in the United States of America to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understand the importance of public works and public works programs in the respective communities. Whereas the year 2016 marks the 56th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by American Public Works Association. Therefore, I Ken Cacain, Mayor of the City of Bristol, do hereby declare the week May 15th to 21st, 2016, to be National Public Works Week in Bristol, Connecticut. And I urge residents to join with representatives of government agencies in the American Public Works Association to acknowledge the substantial contributions these employees make to their health, safety, welfare, quality of life within the City of Bristol. I here on do sign my name, great seal of Bristol, Connecticut, this 10th day of May, 2016. Let me just say, a lot of the, a lot of the city employees, public works, parks, they go unrecognized. A lot of times, we get the calls when someone doesn't like something they did, but we don't get the calls because they do stuff daily. Our streets are clear because of them in the winter. Our streets are clean because of public works and the other ones. So it's nice to hear thank yous every now and then, so reach out to your workers today, this week, if you see them. Say thanks, but don't keep them too long because they have to work.
Regular city council meeting on April 12th, 2016.
So moved. Second.
Motion made second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor. I oppose, motion passes. Item number three, public participation, Sean Ruest.
Good evening. Sean Ruest, 53 Lancaster Road. I don't know how many of you are aware, but the city charter, Section 49, is stated, Boards and Commission meetings, that all board meetings shall be public, and all meetings of boards or commissions whose duties involve the transaction of public business shall be held at accessible stated public places, and all meetings and the minutes thereafter shall be open to the public. Any elector shall have the right to appear and be heard at any such meeting as to any business proper to come before said board or commission. Now, this is the city charter, not the State of Connecticut's FOI rules or regulations. So I understand that when I approach somebody who's holding a board or commission meeting, and I tell them that Section 49 says that any elector has the right to speak and be heard at the meeting, and they tell me, well, let me go check with somebody, and they come back and tell me that they don't have to let me speak. Well, that's technically true, they don't have to, but if they want to keep their oath to the charter that they pledged, then they damn well ought to. And I didn't have to threaten some people. Actually, I brought it to the attention of a few different people. Our Board of Finance Chairwoman, Cheryl Tebow, and, well, as a matter of fact, she said she'd be including that in all future meetings. And I also brought it to the attention of Transportation Commissioner Frank Caputo, and he asked me if he should do that. And I said, well, it was part of the charter, so he said he'd be putting it on there. But there's another reason to do that besides the fact that it's in the charter. If you're soliciting public input for something like transportation, which the city's actually doing outreach for that, and the city's actually doing outreach for the development across the street, why on earth would you want to have a meeting and not allow the public to speak? I can't fathom. But I know I don't want to draw any conclusions about that, but I also wanted to thank Henry Martin because he introduced an amendment. It was not called in the state legislature, but it was against SB 19, which is the Transit Corridor Development Authority. And, well, there's quite a few different opinions about it, but Senator Martin's provision would have allowed for a public referendum before the city entered into a memorandum of agreement. So it wouldn't just be up to the mayor or the city council. It would be up to the electors of the city, which I think is very admirable. If you look at the testimony from that bill, there's a gentleman by the name of Francis Pickering. He was the Deputy Director of the Central Connecticut Regional Planning Agency, and he worked with the City of Bristol on a number of different projects involved with the downtown. And he basically said that last year's proposal for an authority empowered to override zoning and seize property presupposes that municipalities and property owners are the reason why TOD has not taken hold in the state, and he called that leaping the conclusions and said that they should quantify and reevaluate their policies before moving forward with that. And by the way, the Office of Policy Management Under Secretary testified in favor of it. Her, her testimony says that transit-oriented development concentrates housing, parking, cultural, commercial development near transit stops, reducing the need for travel by car, creating walkable communities. Same thing that Bristol is doing, right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sean.
Good evening. Ripley Patton, 49 Field Street. I've been attending these meetings for about a year now. I have to say, I actually feel encouraged. What I'm not happy about is I had to sit here last month and watch you guys hit rock bottom in order for me to feel that way. However, it's extremely concerning to me as a resident, as someone who brings his young daughter to these meetings so that she grows up with an understanding of how local government is supposed to work, that she and the rest of us were subjected to what I believe was a scripted violation of the rules a month ago. And what's equally, if not more concerning to me, with the understanding that mistakes do happen, is that Councilman Brown immediately and accurately informed you all that an improper motion had just taken place. Mary Fortier, who's an attorney, confirmed it. Yet three members of this council and our city attorney sat silent and allowed that to happen. And as soon as that fiasco ended, what did we get? Councilman Proleski illegally removed from the fireboard. Two legal actions, same council meeting within seconds of one another. Not speculation, it's not my opinion, I was here, that happened. But truth be told, I think Councilman Demato, who I have a ton of respect for, hit the nail right on the head in that last Board of Ed, Board of Finance meeting, when he stood and stated that we need to start holding people accountable. Absolutely. When he said it, I immediately thought back to the aftermath of last month's disaster. And while the city had questions, was in a mini uproar, our mayor takes to Facebook. He rants. He blamed the Democrats seven times. He actually pointed a finger at a woman who wasn't in the state, never mind the building, she wasn't in the state. And sometimes, or somehow, in this long blog, referenced himself just once. So I ask, who is accountable when city council breaks the rules? The night the council was sworn in, we received a promise of transparency. Who is accountable for illegally keeping the public in the dark about something so controversial? Accountability. At the inauguration, Mayor Cacain called for officials to put aside partisan politics, work together, let me say that again, work together to create a community that people will flock to, flock to work, live, and raise families. It's a great strategy by all accounts. However, today, from what I believe, Councilman Brown, Councilwoman Fortier, both Democrats on this Republican-controlled committee, along with Dave Proleski, were the highest vote-getters in each of their respective council districts, do not sit on even one council committee. How is that working together? So I ask, who's accountable when 4,100 Bristol votes, Bristol voters, get their votes disrespected, get their votes silenced? Who's accountable for that? Leaders should want to be held accountable when things go right and when things go wrong. And my research doesn't show me anyone in the City of Bristol right now who's willing to step up and do that. So yes, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to say to you that I received your email on the 24th, asking or welcoming me to resign from the ZBA for criticizing your leadership. However, I believe that my First Amendment rights grant me the ability to voice my opinion without fear of retribution by the government, even here in my city of Bristol. But rather than respond through that email like what I wanted to, I figured I'd come here and use this as a teaching moment, like Kate Matthews unfortunately had to do for all of you last month. Leaders follow, are followed in a direction, and I can't find many people Leaders follow in a direction, and I can't find many people that I talk to who believe right now that Bristol is headed in any direction. Leaders don't ask their educated, ready, willing, and able community leaders to step down. Leaders have responsibility to motivate people to step up. Thank you.
Michael Dutco.
Michael J. Dutco, 116 Lewis Road, and I wanted to address the same thing, what happened last month, I happened to watch it on Nutmeg replay right afterwards, and two hours ago, I reviewed it a second time after I made notes. Notes, you know, when it first started, I listened very closely. Mr. Poleski was bringing up valid questions, asking, you know, the questions about it, about there being no discussion. Calvin Brown first brought up improper motion. I think Mary, this is on the soundtrack, gave a second to that. I think this is a technique by the mayor to move things up. I experienced it once, I was here for an issue, and you move things up to avoid discussion. You don't want true democracy to take place here, and true discussion. By moving things up, that's a very wily technique to avoid public input and discussion. It was four minutes long. City attorneys did nothing. They sat here, I'm going to talk just a little bit about the responsibility of a city attorney, city attorneys there. Nobody got up. Three city council people, not a word out of you. I think it has to do with party politics. Eighteen minutes later, yes, Kate Matthews discussed it and said you were doing something wrong. Forty-five minutes later, Calvin Brown brought it up again in old business, and Attorney Quickie says it was done wrong, and assured that. Mr. Poleski again asked the city attorney, why didn't you speak up before? And I just, this really got to me. Mr. Quickie, as a city attorney, and supposedly he works for us, and things should be conducted properly, said, I didn't, I didn't hear a call to question that Mary brought up. No one asked me, and I'm not a member of your panel. You know, and Mary did say, oh, I did bring it up, and he said he didn't hear it. This brings us to the issue, what is, what purpose do our city attorneys to us? I don't want him just to be a part of the money-making machine of City Hall, and that's all their responsibility. There was four minutes there. Mr. Quickie could have came up here and just stood here to help you out. The mayor didn't call on Corporation Council to help out. Mr. Poleski made some efforts to clarify it, but the mayor shut him down. I don't know the city charter very well, but there has to be something, when city procedure is done wrong, how do you, what's the responsibility of a city attorney to make sure and add input and make sure that everything comes out correctly, legally? That you didn't want to have happen last month, Mayor. It could have been done, it could have been done.
Thank you. Through the chair. Go ahead. You know, I think it's appropriate that this time, I mentioned a couple of things that, from my perspective, happened last month. I want to be clear, though, that I think all of us here agree that we've got to move on, close that chapter, close that door, and move on and start working together. Last month's meeting was eventful, to say the least, but my disappointment centered on our opportunity for open dialogue was taken away. What happened, in my opinion, is wrong procedurally and bad governance. To stifle open dialogue in this forum undermines the essential elements of representative government. It goes against the foundations of our constitution regarding government by the people and for the people. When citizens vote, they do more than cast a ballot, they vote their trust, they vote their confidence, and when we take away that voice, we take away their voice, and that's wrong. We have to lead in a manner that inspires confidence and trust, to uphold democratic principles, to represent our constituents to the best of our abilities. Anything less than open dialogue changes the mood of the electorate and mocks the values that we should hold so sacred. We need to raise the bar in governments and aspire to open, honest, cooperative government. Later, under new business, we have a bipartisan plan to show everyone that we can work together, and the mayor's consented to my understanding to this plan. After the meeting, I went away on vacation for a few days, but I got to give the mayor credit because upon my return, he reached out to me. We met together privately before a downtown committee meeting where we were meeting with the hospital. Although we don't agree or didn't agree, it was an opportunity for both of us to talk about our points of view and our position. What we did agree on is that it's time for all of us, the seven of us, to work together for the better interest of the city. Talk is cheap, that's how we do, see how we do. And one last thing, in response to Mr. Dutco, I'm not going to throw any aspersions towards Corporation Council, but at one point in the meeting last month, we did ask why they didn't intervene, and what they said was, what the Corporation Council said was, they weren't asked. Well, I reached out to a few people who represent other towns, and that's an unacceptable answer. My understanding is that's our approach for the last several years, that they weren't asked, they wouldn't join the discussion. Well, I don't care how we did business in the past, we have to develop new expectations right now for the future. The Corporation Council's office represents the entire city of Bristol, they represent all seven of us. If we are wrong procedurally or off-base procedurally, it's the Corporation Council's job to make sure that we conduct business properly. From now on, that's my expectation, and I'm hopeful that all my fellow council members agree with me on that. It's irresponsible to do otherwise. Thank you. Okay, now we're going into announcements, starting my far left.
I had one more thing to add, Your Honor.
Under announcements.
On this topic, no, on this topic, I just have some copies of Robert's Rules of Order that I've gotten for my fellow members of the council, and I also got one for Corporation Council's office. Mr. Quickie isn't here, but I'll give that to his colleagues. I'm just going to pass those out.
We'll start with our announcement, starting her far right, while she does that.
Sure. The first announcement that I want to make is just how thrilled I am to see so many people here, not only supporting our youth recognition awards, but also talking about last month and transparency in government. It makes me feel good. The second thing is a little more serious, you know, I've been a member of the Bristol Exchange Club for several years now, and one of our stalwart members, known to us and known to the entire city of Bristol for his tireless efforts on behalf of the Memorial Boulevard, on behalf of, thank you so much, Mary, community service in our city, is not doing so well. Our friend Jerry Blanchett is not feeling so well right now, and I just want to let him know, and all the friends of, our good friend Jerry, know that we're thinking of him, that we love him, and we wish him a very speedy recovery. So Jerry, the city of Bristol is pulling for you. Thank you.
None, Your Honor.
Thank you, just a few. I wanted to remind everyone that the Bristol Blues is starting their season on Friday, January 3rd. The mayor has the schedule up here. There is going to be fireworks on opening day, and if you haven't seen a game from the Bristol Blues at Muzzy Field, I really encourage you to go, it's great baseball, it's great to see baseball back at Muzzy Field where it should be.
Seven p.m.
Seven p.m. And the American Legion baseball team is starting their season on Sunday, June 5th, and don't forget, the traveling Vietnam Wall will be coming to Bristol. The Veterans Council is very excited about this, they're going to be on Memorial Boulevard from June 9th through the 12th, so during that time, stop and see the wall on the Boulevard.
Yes, just a couple of things, a couple of musical events that took place in the last couple of weeks. First was the Bristol Brass and Wind, their concert was outstanding, it was well-attended. Someone that Dave knows pretty well, Al Caruso, had a solo part for about 10 or 15 minutes, he was just outstanding. Al is how old, 90?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, okay. Did an outstanding job, and then a week later, the Bristol Choral Society held their concert, and obviously, it was their spring concert, very well-attended, and they always do a wonderful job, so congratulations to all those people. That's all I have.
Mayor, Dave Mills stole my notes. I was going to say-
It's open government.
This is open bipartisan government, right. If you haven't seen some of these shows for the Bristol Choral Society or Bristol Brass and Wind Ensemble, it's really some of the good stuff that goes on in Bristol, they do a great job, both Ken Ferris and Rich Thieralt, and the show, I missed the Choral Society, but the Brass and Wind Ensemble sold out full house at Prospect United Methodist Church, they do a splendid job, this year's show was spectacular. Al Caruso played, he's my father-in-law, so I got to plug him, and Blaze Tramazo from the Choral Society. If you haven't seen them, I encourage you to do so, and they're always looking for sponsors, they told me to say that, all right? That's it, thank you, Mayor.
Just a couple, we've had a very rainy last month, but as Councilwoman Jody Zills-Gagney mentioned, baseball season is underway, all our little leaguers are underway, and the Bristol Blues will be starting. I did want to mention that the Bristol Blues has a retail store, they've moved that location to 357 North Main Street, where you can buy tickets, and you can buy gear, if you want to get your Bristol Blues shirts or hats, you can also do that online. I did want to say that despite the rain, the duck race happened last weekend, and just this past Saturday, the Third Annual Pine Lake Fishing Derby also happened in the rain and was very well-attended despite the rain. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. I have a few. Army Strong has announced that the funding has been cut, federal funding has been cut for their program here in City Hall, so as of June 30th, they will be no longer in City Hall. They do have an outreach support line, which is available for 1-866-345-8248. About two weeks ago, myself and a member of the Veterans Council, Pat Nelligan, I believe he's the chair, we flew out to Washington, we met with our congressional delegation to talk about keeping funding alive for this, they're fully in support, we met with Senator Murphy, Senator Blumenthal, and Congressman Larson, they were fully in support, they sent a letter this week to, I believe it was the Army, don't ask me who, in support of this. We are trying to talk to the Army about doing a pilot program here in Bristol, which is going to allow, if we're able to do it, it will allow Army Strong to have still some roots here in City Hall, or somewhere in the city of Bristol, I should say, so we are working on that, this is a priority for myself and Pat. As I said, we flew out to Washington for the day, and spent all day in meetings on this, talking with different people, so that is going on. Councilwoman Gagney took my Blues announcement. We have been meeting with the Board of Ed, we had a meeting with the Board of Ed in regards to consolidation with this tough budget we have, we're looking at consolidating some duplicated services, and that meeting was myself, the comptroller and personnel director on the city side, on the Board of Ed side, it was the superintendent, human resources director, and the finance director, and the chairman of the Board of Ed, Chris Wilson, and we had a great talk. The chairman was going to go back to his Board of Ed, discuss this, and then, once they come back, we'll have more talks, but we are in the talks for consolidation. Today, I spent, I don't know if you missed it earlier from our comptroller, but the state is cutting serious money from our budget, right now it's at $1.2 million, we're expecting to go higher. That is a significant hit to Bristol's budget. These are cuts that are out of our control, we have no control over this, so it's not good news. On the positive stuff, we have a lot of stuff going on in Bristol, we have new construction, if you look around, we have a new building on Pine Street, we have a new building on Route 6 going up. For the first time in history, we have two new buildings going up in the southeast industrial park, never happened before. So this is exciting time for Bristol, we're bringing in jobs, bringing in tax dollars. House values under last term in district continue to rise, and we are continuing to attack blight, so we have a lot of things going, we've turned a corner with Bristol, and it's getting back to the old Bristol that I knew, where everybody's, you know, positive. I refuse to go negative, we're staying positive, and it's showing. Our mall development across the street, the hospital project is moving forward, when I say across the street, I talk about Depot Square, and we have at least three serious developers that are interested in coming in and working because the hospital stepped up to the plate and are putting their money, or the money into the mall property. So we have a lot of big things happening in Bristol, we're bringing in tax revenue, but even more than that, we're bringing in jobs, which is what our goal was. So that's all I have. Item number five.
Consent calendar. Your Honor, would you prefer if I read them or to have somebody make a motion to waive the reading?
We have a motion to waive the reading for the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second. Motion made, second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor. I oppose. Motion passes.
And then the next motion would be to approve the consent calendar, but I do have one correction, the purchasing agent made a change on item G, it shouldn't be 34250, he changed it to 34840.
Okay, motion-
The dollar amount.
Motion to accept consent calendar A through G with the correct as noted. Move it.
Second.
Motion made, second to discussion.
Your Honor, quickly, item G, 22 Muzzy Street.
Yes.
Can you quickly describe which property that is?
This is a house that we received on back taxes for a tax delinquent, it is, we took down last year the Sabino's Building-
Right.
Going down Muzzy Street, there's one single-family house, and this was an abandoned house right after it.
Right, okay.
What we are doing is we're going to, we're taking down the house, and right now, the short-term plan is to make that bus parking, so we get the buses off the street and allow more public parking.
I remember when I was on Park Board, I think this is all the way from back then-
Yeah.
Has there been any movement on that middle house? Or is that not even something that's-
Not much, he still wants to reduce the price.
Okay, all right, that's all I want to know.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number six, real estate committee.
Yes, Your Honor. My computer is not working again, so I've got to go over to Dave's computer.
Oops. Dave and Dave.
Dave and Dave. I have a motion, Your Honor. I hereby move that the city of Bristol seeks requests for proposals with a minimum bid of $50,000 for the disposition of property owned by the city, known as 384 Full Mountain Road on map 10 of the Bristol Assessor's Office, and that the purchasing agent be authorized to request proposals, and that he send out a press release in addition to legal notices and update the city website. I further move that this matter be referred to Public Works to erect signage and the property advertising the proposal. I further move that this matter be referred-
Hang on. I further move that the mayor, move that the mayor, enacting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Motion made, second to discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item 6B.
Thank you. I'm going to read them from the paper here. Okay, you have another motion? I hereby move that the city of Bristol seek requests for proposals with no minimum bid for the disposition of property owned by the city known as 312 Oakland Street on map 24 of the Bristol Assessor's Office, and the purchasing agent be authorized to request proposals, and that he send out press release in addition to legal notices and update the city website. I further move that the matter be referred to Public Works to erect signage in the property and advertise the proposal. I further move that this matter be referred to the Corporation Council, prepare and review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second. We have a second.
Second.
Motion made, second to discussion. Through the chair. Was this property before us before?
Yes.
Can you explain?
This is, okay, this is the property that we had the discussion on, where we had two bids, one was the bid where they were going to come in and-
A little creative?
Well, it was creative, $1, and they were going to, and it was the one that was denied by the Board of Finance, so it's going back out to bid.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Just one other thing, I did notice, and a couple of these properties, and the signs are up from the Board of, from the-
Purchasing agent?
No, the Board of Public Works, and they do make a difference, they do call attention to the property, so I think it's a great, great idea that we're doing that.
Good. Another discussion. Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Okay, the next motion is I hereby move to grant the Bristol Auto Club LTD, permission to use portion of Depot Square for a cruise night from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. every Sunday, every Saturday from May 7th, 2016 through October 1st, 2016. The club will not use Depot Square on June 11th, 2016, or during the Moon Festival. I further move that this matter be referred to the Department of Public Works to determine the appropriate location in the event of Depot Square. I further move that the matter be referred to Corporation Council Office for insurance compliance. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary- execute- or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary, execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second. Motion main seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
And the last motion I have is I hereby move to grant the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection Bureau of Natural Resources permission to use Depot Square for parking and shuttle service to the hunting and fishing day at Sessions Woods on September 24th, 2016. I further move that this matter be referred to the Department of Public Works to determine the appropriate location of the event on Depot Square. I further move that this matter be referred to the Corporation Council Office for insurance compliance. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second. Second. Motion main seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
I do have one more committee report, if I may, just from the School Readiness Council. It's time to register for kindergarten. Seeing the electronic signs flashing the message across the city, preschool children going home with reminder stickers, information on the Board of Ed and school websites, it is so important that parents register their children in a timely fashion. The schools are holding their parent organization meetings, and it's so important parents attend these to become acclimated with the school system to ensure school success for their child. Bristol School Readiness, in partnership with the Fire Department, holds a raffle for a trirotrocar ride for the first day of school for a kindergartner that was registered on time. It's a great incentive to do the right thing. And again, as the father of a kindergarten teacher, I just can firsthand tell you how important it is to have people register on time. There's nothing more difficult than to come to school expecting to have 20 or 22 kids in your class, and all of a sudden, three new kids come into your classroom. They have no idea where they came from. So, again, I urge parents to do the right thing, and if their child is gonna be going to kindergarten, please register them as soon as possible. Thank you.
Councilwoman, any committee reports?
Yes, I just have a couple. As I said last month, the Transportation Committee, along with the Disabilities Commission, sponsored a transportation forum at the Bristol Public Library on April 13th. It was well-attended, of course, not as well as we might have hoped, but Nutmeg TV did record that, and so it is available on Nutmeg TV. It's somewhat difficult to find, so when you're looking at video on demand, and you're supposed to put in keywords, you wouldn't know this, but the keyword that you could put in would be "way," because the name of the forum was "Way to Go Connecticut." It was talking about the different ways you can get around, especially if you're disabled. So, if you do have anyone that is interested in the different modes of transportation, and how they interact with each other and work together, that is available on Nutmeg TV. It was a great presentation with a lot of great information. And again, the keyword is "way." One other committee that I'm a member of is BCO, which is the Bristol Community Organization, which is the community action agency for the greater Bristol area, and they've been serving Bristol in different forms for over 40 years. I wanted to let folks know that as part of sort of a, an outgrowth of the state budget woes, this has been coming for several years, but they are working on a plan to consolidate with the Human Resources Agency, which is their sister organization in New Britain. The two organizations will be merging to form one nonprofit corporation. They will continue to serve Bristol here at the Bristol locations, and they'll continue to serve New Britain, but they're working on that consolidation, so I wanted folks to know that, and there'll be more news about that as that consolidation progresses. That's it. Thank you.
Councilman?
Mayor, do you mind if I talk a little bit about the BDA Downtown Committee?
Yeah, go ahead.
Two reports here, Mayor. One is the BDA Downtown Committee met since our last council meeting. The hospital provided us with a detailed report and update. They have their development team in place, and they've had interest from numerous possible developers, which is great news, I think, at this stage of the development. I wanna report that I think that they're in significant compliance with their letter of intent, and that we probably should see some significant detail from them by the end of May. While the hospital does its due diligence, Mr. Malley is working with our consultant, Malone and McBroom. They're working on details, laying out the groundwork for the site, and documenting important details so we move forward. I wanted everybody to know that while we're waiting for the hospital to do its due diligence, that strategic initiatives are still moving the project forward from the city side. If you go to the BristolAllHeart.com website, you can be part of a naming opportunity for the new, for the old mall site. We're gonna, we think it's best that we're gonna change the name. I think there might be a little bit of negativity or stigma, I think, with the old name, so we're thinking about changing that. We're having a little contest. Lastly, and very much, and more importantly, I think, Wallet Hub recognized our city as the third-best city in which to do business in the state of Connecticut for cities under 100,000. So, I think that's a good word that we gotta get around. And if I may, Your Honor, one thing, a couple things on the ordinance committee. We have two public hearings on May 18th, starting at 4:40. One is on a noise ordinance, ordinance change. We have a plan to have the Police Department have a couple people trained in the equipment necessary for noise violations, and we are, we have a fairly significant change in the ordinance language that will prohibit recreational vehicle usage in residential areas within 100 feet of a boundary line. So, if anybody has any interest, I think that, you know, you hate to legislate not having fun, but there's some significant issues, and safety issues, related to that ordinance change. And just a reminder, we've gotten a considerable amount of feedback from department heads on some proposed changes for city vehicle lettering. We only have a 10-minute timeframe for this public hearing. I would encourage any department heads who wanna come to come, but please have remarks prepared in case we run out of time. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, from Public Works, they started roads resurfacing for the following streets: Robertson Street, DePietra Lane, DePietra Court, Constance Lane, First Street, Bellevue Avenue, Belvedon Garden Lane, Fourth Street, Sixth Street, Academy Street, Longview Avenue, Amy Lane, Anita Drive, and Doris Road. And there's also going to be road reconstruction on Burke Street. And then, from the park board, they wanted to remind everyone that summer youth registration is beginning this coming Monday. It opens at midnight. Summer is a little bit longer for the kids this year. The last day of school is June 9th, and the first day of school is September 1st, so it's almost three full months. So, they have a really good camp that the kids really seem to love, and that opens up on May 16th. Also, Muzzy Field is scheduled to open on May 20th, and there is a West End cleanup beginning at 1:00 p.m. If you are interested in that, meet in the municipal lot on the corner of West End School, and that should last-
This Sunday.
This Sunday, and that's about an hour?
Hour and a half, two hours.
Hour and a half, two hours. People walk around and clean up the West End, make it look nice, and if you're part of the West End, if you care about the West End, it's a good time, and I encourage everyone to be there. Thank you.
Your Honor, just one, one thing. Clarification with Councilman Proleski with regard to the ordinance committee. Just because I've been seeing some chatter, both online and in person, this noise ordinance has come up because of quads and dirt bikes. So, if that involves you, you may wanna come to the public, you know, you may wanna come to the meeting. We've had a few neighborhoods with this problem, mine included, so targeted towards quads and dirt bikes. So, if you own one, you might wanna come, so we can come to some kinda amicable solution. Thanks.
Councilman? Yes, from the library. The library will be observing Armed Forces Day on Saturday, May 21st, at 2:00 p.m., with a special showing of the documentary "Fire on the Mountain" about the exploits of the 10th Mountain Division who fought in the Italian Alps during World War II. There will be a display of memorabilia, and a guest appearance by Bristol's own Tony Saleo, a 10th Mountain Division veteran. So, that'll be exciting to attend. That's May 21st at 2:00 p.m. Also, the last of the Main Street Foundation Coffee House Music Series will finish with a concert by the Vermont Duo of Ken Anderson and Rebecca Hall, known as Hungry Town, on Thursday, May 26th, at 6:30 p.m. So, again, that's Hungry Town on Thursday, May 26th, at 6:30 p.m. Both of these programs are free, but registration is suggested, and you can register by either calling the main branch of the library, or stopping in there and registering in person. And that's it for me for committee reports.
Okay, and I have none. Unfinished, I'm trying to get unfinished business, starting my far right.
Yes. So, last month, I asked about updates for the lead situation in the building, and you had mentioned, Your Honor, that going forward, there would be monthly lead testing and lead reports done?
I don't know if there were, were they monthly? Where's Walt? Are we doing a monthly or quarterly?
I, here will be, I forgot, remember, if there's some monthly testing in this schedule.
So, has there been any more testing since the last council meeting to talk about?
We've done some testing on some offices, some areas that were clean, but not part of that follow-up yet.
Okay, so, the testing that was done has shown no new traces of lead?
No.
Okay. And then, the follow-up on that is, have we any idea at this point, since last month, what's, what caused the lead situation?
They haven't, they have some ideas, but they haven't pinpointed it, so-
Okay.
Once we know exactly what it is, then we'll-
Next steps from there?
Yeah.
Okay. That is it for unfinished business, from me.
Councilman?
None, Your Honor.
None.
None, Your Honor?
None.
And the Chair has none. New business, starting my far left.
None for me.
Mayor, we have one. I, just one.
Dave, mic roll.
One, please. I just wanted to say that Councilman DiMatto and I have been talking of deliberating about some of the things that we've achieved to, as council members, and what we're, we're trying to do is promote a bipartisan approach to set some kinda priorities for each council member's, work priorities, things that we said during the election we wanted to work on, but we haven't been, because we're bogged on in other city business. And so, we've, I think, Councilman DiMatto talked to the mayor. We're gonna do, have a caucus that we lead to some, I think, pretty good, objective work on behalf of all the council members, in a bipartisan way, to get things done that we set out to do in the first place. So, that, we're hopeful for you, Mayor.
I think that's a great idea, and while you're doing that, let me also just say that, and I think everyone up here knows it, my office has always been open to all the councilmen. Dave, you've popped in, I know that, and Dave P., not Dave M., although you've popped in too. But my door's always open for anyone, anytime, but I think coming in with a caucus, with your caucus, and coming in with your priorities is a great idea. Thank you.
The only thing I wanna just talk-
Are you done?
Thank you.
Okay.
The Marketing Committee, next Friday, will be holding a meeting. We're gonna be talking about the eight to 10 major events that are gonna be happening in the city this summer. So, if anyone is available, there's a meeting at 9 o'clock. I know it's early in the morning, and it's difficult for people to get there, but if you have some ideas on how to market the city, there's gonna be at least eight to 10 major events, starting in June with the Blues, and ending with the MUM Festival in late September, late September to early October. So, it's gonna be an exciting summer, and I say major events. In addition to the major events, there's many, many other events that are gonna be taking place this summer in town, so we're gonna try to get the word out to people as to what's going on. And again, Dave mentioned before, the Bristol All Heart website. I would urge that you go to that daily if you can. If you're not signed up, get signed up, because that gives you all kinds of information as to what to expect from the city. That's it.
None.
Just to echo Councilman Proleski's concerns, thanks for bringing that up. I do think that both caucuses, meeting with the mayor, would be a good start. I just wanna emphasize, like the mayor said, there's a lot of positive things going on in this town, and I think that the way that we can keep that going is by either individually meeting, or meeting as a caucus with the mayor, to get our priorities straight. With that being said, I think that would allow everyone up here to work together fairly, facilitate better communication. You know, not that we don't work together already, because I think plenty of us do. However, I think that's important, so we can move the city from, you know, announcements and things that are negative to something more positive, like the development that's happening in town, the industrial lots that are being sold, the positive things that are gonna grow the city, rather, things that are gonna hold us back. Thanks.
Councilman?
One item. Over the last couple of weeks, especially on primary day, I know I received some complaints from, not complaints, I received some notices from citizens who were concerned going into the schools to vote, and noticing that while students were in session, and while people were going into the schools to vote, there was some intermingling of the people going to vote and the students that were going to school. You know, normal election days, the schools are closed, so people going in to vote, that's not an issue, but on primary day, the school was in session. So, I wanted to bring it up under new business tonight to maybe ask if the Police Commission would look into, into perhaps increasing police security at the schools on those specific sorts of occasions, or if maybe we can talk about doing extra security in general on the Board of Ed side. I just wanted to bring it up under new business as an idea for a discussion.
We could, we could definitely bring it up on, for discussion on the Police Board.
Okay.
But I think another place to bring it would be to Board of Ed and ask them if they would close, if there's, if they, they obviously felt they didn't have a concern, because we talked before the election with the registers if they had a concern. I have a sudden school, so they didn't feel there was a concern. I'll tell you, when I voted, there was someone meeting me at the door. They made, I voted at Southside School, they watched where I went. So, the Board of Ed didn't feel there was a concern. I think I got, I had one person email me, the same person called Dave, and probably the same person called you, I would assume. But the Board of Ed didn't feel there's a concern. Other communities chose to close school. So, that's really the Board of Ed call, but we definitely will talk about it at the Police Board.
Okay.
Chief, Captain, can you make, thank you.
One thing that we did suggest, and I believe it happened, was that at least at dismissal time, there were people there that-
Yes.
So, that there was more police presence there, so there was no intermingling of people there. So, at least effort was made to do that.
Great.
Good point. Alright, thank you. Anything else, Councilman?
No.
Resignations?
There's one resignation from Dave Mills, from the Mayor's Energy Consumption Task Force.
Do I approve that?
I hope so.
Alright, well, motion to accept his resignation, and we're gonna save the stamp, and I'll thank you for serving on the board personally.
Thank you.
Okay. Appointments. Commission on Aging to reappoint Jack Hartman, Section 2-9 resignation, unexpired term to 318. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion main seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Fire Board of Commissioners, to clarify that Dave Proleski is still a member of the Fire Board. Commissioner, Mayor's Task Force on Energy Consumption, I'm making, asked for a motion to reduce the membership to the task force by two citizens at large members and one park board commissioner. And if I could have a motion in a second, I'll explain why.
Second.
Motion main seconded. The reason why is the board is so large, they're having trouble getting a quorum. Councilman, I think you sit on this board.
Yep, that's right.
So, I think you could probably attest to this.
Yeah, that's right.
By reducing this, and this was a request by the Chair, to reduce this will allow them to have a, have a quorum easily, more easily. So, all in favor.
Just a question before we vote. How many will that leave on the energy consumption?
Nine or 11?
There were 13, so it's, yeah, it'll be 10.
It'll be 10.
There'll be 10.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Mayor's Task Force on Energy Consumption, to appoint Mike Lamoth to replace Jake Carrier, Board of Finance member, resign no term.
Second.
Motion main seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Bristol Histor, uh, no, I'm not gonna do that one. Inland Wetman's Commission, to reappoint Gerald Doobie, three-year term to 519, and to reappoint Mike Saman, three-year term to 519.
So moved.
Second.
Motion main seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Council Boards. Commission on Disabilities, to appoint Mary Fortier. Mayor's Task Force on Age, to appoint Calvin Brown. Intend your capital improvement, to remove Jody Gagny, and to appoint Dave Proleski. So, we'll have one of those. Item number 10.
Was there a historic district, one person to move up?
No, I have to check with Denise. I don't, I have, she's tech worker. Item number 11.
Resolution regarding 2016-2017 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant and Authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to Execute. And there is a resolution to read?
I'm okay to read a resolution.
I can read that. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the 2016-2017 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant, as approved by the Bristol Development Authority on April 25th, 2016, is hereby approved, and that the mayor or acting mayor is hereby authorized to execute any and all documents relating to this grant, including final agreements, and to submit to the United States Department-
and to submit to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Be it further resolved that annual action plan be referred to the Board of Finance for action regarding the appropriation of funds.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Motion main seconded, discussion. Hearing none, resolution, starting my far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item number twelve, Councilman's gonna, you're gonna...
I'll abstain instead. I should be able to abstain, correct? On voting, you want to leave?
Yeah.
Alright.
Item number twelve.
Resolution regarding Economic Development Grant, up to sixty-four thousand, one hundred dollars to Bob's Sports Chalet for constructing a new location on Pine Street, and there is a resolution to read?
Someone can read it.
I can read that. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, to provide an economic development grant in the amount of up to sixty-four thousand, one hundred dollars, which includes five thousand dollars for job creation, to Bob's Sports Chalet for purposes of constructing a new location on Pine Street and relocating business operations to said facility, subject to normal provisions. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Motion main seconded, discussion. Hearing none, resolution, starting my far left.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Item thirteen.
Item thirteen is...
He's staying up for this one, too.
Resolution regarding Economic Development Grant, up to forty-eight thousand dollars to Supernatural LLC for purchasing and renovating two hundred twenty-four North Main Street.
I read that, your honor. The, be it hereby resolved that the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, to provide an economic development grant in the amount of up to forty-eight thousand dollars, which includes eight thousand dollars for job creation to Supernatural LLC for purposes of purchasing and renovating two twenty-four North Main Street and relocating its business operations to said facility, subject to normal provisions. Be it further resolved that the matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Do for approval.
Motion main seconded, discussion. Hearing none, resolution, starting my far right?
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes, motion passes. Then we're gonna do item fifteen, it's been taken off the agenda, so item fourteen in the addenda.
There are two executive sessions. The first is the City of Bristol versus JD Realty et al., docket number HHB CV thirteen six oh two twenty-one thirty-four S, and the second one is the matter of City of Bristol versus Town of Burlington, Superior Court, docket number CV fifteen six oh two nine one eight four S.
Who's going in? Just a court counsel, nobody else. Okay, motion to go in executive session.
Move it.
Second.
Your honor, before we do, Superintendent Longo seems to have something he wants to ask, say?
I'm sorry.
Superintendent Longo's looking for something.
I think he wants to be added to going in.
We're gonna bring in Rabulongo as well.
If we could have Rabulongo on the water matter.